It's five o'clock. I'd like to call to order the Plan and Zone Commission meeting. We'll start off with our public hearing. Roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider.
Present.
Lammers.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Tomlin, present. Ingram.
Present.
Hepner.
Here.
Bransgard.
Present.
Reinartz.
Here.
Manus.
Here.
And Garrington.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Report of city council activity. Wait a second. Do we not have a public hearing tonight?
We have no public hearing today.
Thank you, Laura. We'll move on to our regular meeting. City council activity?
Nothing major to report.
Nothing major to report?
Well, they tabled the second consideration of the Rock Church rezoning, so I don't really have anything to update you on. They're waiting until the Seventh Ward Alderman has been appointed.
Makes sense. Thank you. Secretary's report?
Move report.
Second.
Secretary's report's been moved and seconded as printing. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none, opposed. It will stay as printed. Moving on to count plan. Anything new, staff?
No, not at this time.
Thank you, Laura. Zoning activity. Commissioner Schneider.
Case number REZ 21-03, request of bill to suit on behalf of Elmore Storage LLC to rezone 6403 Elmore Avenue from C-E Elmore Corners to C-3 General Commercial District to allow for the expansion of the existing outdoor storage units. Planning staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission forward case REZ 21-03 to the city council with a recommendation for approval without conditions and I so move.
Case number REZ 21-03's been moved and seconded for discussion. Staff?
Scott Coates, Department of, or the Division of Neighborhood Services. So, quick summarize that this lot is already half-developed with self-storage. The existing storage is non-conforming. In order to continue to develop the rest of the site, there's an application to rezone it to C-3, which is general commercial. On slide three, we show the zoning map and the Davenport 2035 map. So, it's still in CE currently, like I said, and the the regional commercial land use map, that is an appropriate designation for the proposed use. Also to have note is that on the zoning map on the left side, way at the bottom there, you might not be able to quite see it, but there is C-3 zoning south of those apartments where the Walmart lots are. So, moving on to the zoning purpose statements. So, CE has a specific vision for Elmore Corners. We went through the plans. There were no specific plans for this site as it's a use that's not allowed in that district. In the C-3 general commercial district, the purpose statement for that is that it allows higher-intensity commercial development serving both local and regional markets. This proposed use would fit in with the C-3 uses should it be rezoned. It turns off on itself. Excellent. The slide number six, purpose of the request. As I said, when I summarized the beginning, this continuation of zoning. In 2015, this site was developed with outdoor self-storage. The property was originally zoned way back in 2001 to Plan Development District. That didn't get developed until 2015. It was developed through our Plan Development System at that time where there's a final development plan. So, it was an allowed use when it went in. And then, in 2019, January nine, that's when the CE Elmore Corners was approved. And 10 days later, or 11 days later, our new zoning was approved as well. So, it was developed appropriately. It wasn't allowed use at one time, and now it's non-conforming. And the petitioner is wishing to finalize that development, fulfill the rest of the site out. And just kind of a reminder, some of the things that I went through in my staff report. You know, we found out that the CE doesn't have any design districts or design standards for self-storage. So, right now, there is nothing that it requires as far as design should it stay where it's at. But they wouldn't be able to develop where they're at, and that's why we're doing the rezoning. And then, the exhibits that I had in the report, you know, the concept plan doesn't show anything for the existing site, the layout plan didn't show anything, and the landscape plan didn't show anything. Basically, you know, this site's not planned for the CE district. It's an existing use that's non-conforming, and so they don't have any specific vision or plans for this site. Public input, we did do our normal notice to adjacent neighbors and notice in the Quad City Times, and we have not received anything in writing regarding this request. Slide nine, our findings. The approval standards of 1714 have been met. The proposal's consistent with Davenport 2025-plus. The proposed use is compatible with adjacent zoning area characteristics and public welfare. There will not be any creation of non-conformities. In fact, there will be a change. This property will become conforming should the rezoning be approved. Additionally, special use approval will be required for this site. C-3 requires a special use for self-storage, and there will be another level of review. Planning recommends that the Plan and Zone Commission forward case REZ 21-03 to city council with a recommendation for approval without conditions.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Commissioner Manus.
Thank you. You said there will be another level of review. Is that special use or?
Right, the special use goes before the zoning board of adjustment. We would notify property owners within 200 feet and hold a public hearing. And at that meeting, the details will be worked out about any special conditions that there might be placed on the site.
What sort of special conditions might be implied?
Well, for one, the fencing is likely to be required to be continued as it is now. Right now, it has a security gate where if you have a code, you can get into it. And it's a nice quality fence. It's not chain link or anything. It's kind of a wrought iron-type style. And so, that'll most likely be a condition that's continued on with that special use.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Reinartz.
Thank you. A number of years, I was part of approving the Elmore Corners the last time it was presented. When it was originally presented to us, it was presented as wanting it to be an upscale commercial area with limitations on frontage, limitations on height, and statements were made as to control what went in there so that it would be kind of a showcase area. What I'm hearing is that two years later, this concept or this idea doesn't exist anymore. And the other reason I feel that way is because the storage area was there when we approved the Elmore Corners plan. And statements were made at that time that we wanted to control the amount of storage units, and we didn't want car washes and those types of things in there affecting what we anticipated to have was an upscale area. In the past, or more recently, we've had a car wash come in, and they were told they had to make some modifications to their plan to make it acceptable to the Elmore Corners' long-term plan. My concern is that we've been two years into this Elmore Corners' plan, and now we're already, we've got a car wash there, and now we're talking about expanding a storage area, which my understanding was that the plan for Elmore's Corners was to kind of prevent that from occurring. So...
I can speak a little bit to that. Just to clarify, when we reviewed the Elmore Corners' plan, what we're saying is this specific lot was not mentioned at all. If you look carefully at really all of the documents in that plan, this right here is the land that we're talking about, and it says existing warehouse storage. There is no guidance anywhere in those guidelines that discusses this property specifically. I think the assumption was made that this would be fully built out. And so, this is one of the very unique circumstances that we don't take it lightly, that these design guidelines are in place. This is one of those special circumstances where the design guidelines are silent on this piece of property specifically.
My fear is that there's going to be additional things down the road that say, "Well, we didn't plan on this being there, but we want to change the zoning again."
Noted.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. I will say, staff's recommendation on this is based in part, and I probably could have played it up more in our staff report, but there is no frontage on Elmore with this lot. If this had frontage on Elmore, I think our staff report would have been quite a bit different. But once the property in front of this is developed, it will not be seen from Elmore Avenue.
So, they're not going to be permitted to purchase any additional property and expand it one more time?
We can't control purchase of land. We can just control the use. And a petitioner is always able to submit a rezoning request, and we'd process it, and we'd review on an individual basis. Should land within the Elmore Corners' design area have the similar requests, it would probably look quite different from our staff recommendation standpoint.
All right, fine. Thank you.
Any additional questions at this time from commissioners?
Even though there's no frontage on Elmore, did the staff consider a condition to have landscaping in the front even though there's a nicer fence that you alluded to?
Staff was going to be reliant upon the existing landscape standards that we have in our code to provide for this property. Additionally, there will be the special use approval, which could or may get into those details more specifically. Right now, when you have two commercial properties side by side, the landscaping isn't as onerous as if you have a residential property separated by a commercial property.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Would anybody in the audience care to speak in favor or against this petition?
I think Commissioner Garrington, did you have something?
Commissioner Garrington?
I just wanted to ask some that, yes. Last year, F 20-4, we approved a car wash, and I drove by this area, and they had promised us a very nice business in that area. And although it is not complete, it did look like they were doing a very nice job of landscaping.
Thank you, Commissioner Garrington. Any additional comments? Anybody in the audience care to speak in favor or opposition? Seeing none, final call for questions. Roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Yes.
Lammers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes? Hepner?
Yes.
Bransgard?
Yes.
Reinartz?
No.
Manus?
Yes.
And Garrington?
Yes.
Eight-one motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. We'll move on to subdivision. Commissioner Hepner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two cases this evening. Case number F 20-11.
There's one on the second page, too.
Case number F 20-11, request of DA Montana LLC for a final plat of Shirley's Shire for a three-lot subdivision on 12.043 acres located north of Telegraph Road west of Wisconsin Avenue. Staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the listed findings and forward case F 20-11 to the city council with a recommendation for approval subject to the four listed conditions, and I so move.
Case number F 20-11 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Staff?
Okay. Okay, so this is the both existing zoning map and future land use map. As you can see, there's a split zoning on this land, which is something that we don't deal with very often. And I do have, one of the conditions I will kind of go over a little bit so you understand what's happening with it. The future land use map does show it as residential general. So, here is the general final plat. That's a three-lot subdivision. The, when it's subdivided, it will meet all of our zoning code requirements in terms of the subdivision of the agricultural areas, which is if it remains in agricultural use, it can be subdivided to no less than one acre. So, that condition is met in this plat. The other piece of that is there will be an affidavit that is recorded with this that we do have in hand and was part of the packet that acknowledges the existing uses that will become, that are considered legal non-conforming at this time, and acknowledging that those will not be expanded, and that residential uses will not be expanded onto the agricultural-zoned land without prior permission from the city, which would result in, it's basically the need to rezone it if they want to do residential uses in the agricultural area. So, that will be recorded in addition to the plat if approved.
Thank you, Laura. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Seeing none, I need to bring up a subject, Laura, that you and I have talked about several times. I know this affidavit becomes a legal document as to what they can or can't do with this property. But at the same time, it requires somebody to police that property to make sure that the uses aren't occurring. I guess you and I have talked about conditions that we've applied to rezonings or subdivisions that just aren't being done. And where can we go within the city to put some teeth into our conditions? I mean, I've got an arm-long length of properties that parking lots aren't done and hard surface, privacy fences aren't put up, signage isn't correct. I mean, it goes on and on and on where we have conditions, and nobody polices them. Can we, I know we've had a lot of staff shuffling and the new 2019 zoning ordinance modifications we've been doing. How can we put some teeth into this? How can we police when conditions aren't met? I mean, I know you and I have been talking behind the scenes. I think now's the time where we're four months, five months into 2021, and the new zoning regs went in 2019. Do we have any suggestions, or is there a path we can follow? Does anybody want to jump in?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, why don't we talk about that as a separate, aside from the subdivisions? We can talk about that. I don't want it to get confused as a part of this component.
No, no, no. Neither do I.
Yeah.
It's just, I just had to say something.
I understand, and it's acknowledged, and I think part of it is we can sit down and talk through those and see if we can come up with a game plan. I think we have staff that's new. We have a department that's new, and we're just getting our processes in place to move forward, so...
And again, commissioners, do not think that this is something that I am putting on this affidavit. I don't want that to affect your vote on this. This is not, I'm not trying to affect how this vote goes. I'm just saying, outside of this, we need to sit down and make some changes to how we move forward on our conditions. But, anyway, are there any additional questions or clarifications, either virtually or in person? Hearing and seeing none, the audience has left, so I assume there's no additional comments there. Can I have roll call, please?
Yes, you may, Mr. Chairman. Lammers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes? Hepner?
Yes.
Bransgard?
Yes.
Reinartz?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
And Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Next case, P 21-01, request of Dan Dolan Homes on behalf of Sophie Foster Revocable Trust for a preliminary plat of Birchwood Grove for a 73-lot subdivision on 20 acres located at 4607 East 53rd Street. Staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the listed findings and forward case P 21-01 to the city council with a recommendation for approval subject to the 14 listed conditions, and I so move.
Second.
Case number P 21-01 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining from this case on the next one, and I will have Vice Chair Manus handle roll call.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Staff?
Thank you. So, this is the Sophie Foster Revocable Trust property that was recently rezoned earlier. Earlier this spring, city council approved the rezoning to C-2 Corridor Commercial District on the northern roughly 18 acres of property abutting 53rd Street. And then, the southern roughly 20 acres was rezoned to residential multifamily. In addition, city council approved the future land use amendment making that commercial portion a regional commercial land use, and then the southern residential portion residential general. And that rezoning was also approved with 15 conditions on the property. On the screen before you is the preliminary plat for the residential portion of the development. The plat adds about roughly 2,000 linear feet of street that will be dedicated as public right-of-way to the city. Lakeview Parkway will extend south from 53rd Street and will eventually align with the intersection north of 53rd. And then, there will be a second north-south road on the eastern portion of the property. The lots abutting the adjacent residential neighborhoods will be single-family semi-detached. At this time, they're proposed to be owner-occupied. And then, the lots north of Lakeview Court shown on this plat will be owner-occupied townhomes. And then, that northern portion will be rental townhouse-style multifamily. So, in total, there are 73 lots, two of which are outlots, one at the southwest corner along Stafford Creek, which will be used for stormwater detention. And then, a second outlot at the northeast corner, which also will be used for stormwater management. Before you is a concept plan submitted by the applicant showing building footprints and how that would lay out on the site. This is just the concept plan at this time. Staff is recommending that the commission accept the listed findings and forward the case to city council with a recommendation for approval subjected to conditions. So, the findings are that the plat conforms with the comprehensive plan and that the plat with conditions would achieve consistency with the subdivision requirements. So, there are 14 conditions recommended by staff to be applied to this preliminary plat. The first being that a note should be added to the plat stating that all streets will be dedicated as public right-of-way upon recording. Second, all rezoning conditions shall be listed as a note on the plan. Third, Birchwood Lane and Lakeview Court shall be renamed. So, there's currently a Birchwood Avenue on the west side of Davenport, so we're proposing a new name for that public right-of-way to avoid confusion. And then, there also is an existing Lakeview Court. Staff is recommending renaming that to East 50th Street to align better with the existing street network.
I have one brief comment on that. We are looking into allowing it to be extended as entirely into Lakeview Parkway. We're checking with emergency dispatch services to see if that would run into any issues. So, the name itself hasn't been finalized. You'll see a finalized name on the final plat.
The fourth condition is that all sidewalks shall be shown on the preliminary plat, and a note shall be added stating that the sidewalk shall be installed as development occurs or is so ordered by the city. Five, all building footprints shall be added to the preliminary plat. Six, add all setbacks to the plat. Seven, drainage easements shall be separated from the landscape buffers that are mentioned in the rezoning ordinance conditions. Number eight, pedestrian access to the existing sidewalks on East 51st Street, East Berry Estates and Hawk Drive shall be depicted as a pedestrian easement with a note stating that the landowner must maintain a five-foot-wide pedestrian sidewalk for the appropriate lot numbers. This was referenced in the rezoning ordinance to create pedestrian connections to those adjacent residential neighborhoods. Number nine, the lots containing townhouses shall be combined to contain at least one building to meet interior side setback requirements. So, as proposed, they show each unit on its own lot north of Lakeview Court on the plat. So, this condition would put one whole building per lot and can be further subdivided through a condo plat versus a final plat. Number 10, infrastructure is labeled as private or public as appropriate. Eleven, adequate access easement shall be provided to Lot B for maintenance of the detention basin. Twelve, sewer easement shall be shown for lots 21 and 68. Condition 13, a note shall be added that all drainage easements shall be maintained by the landowner as stormwater passageways as a lawn and be free of structures, pools, fences, fill, bushes, trees, shrubs, or other landscaping that impede the flow of water. And then, finally, 14, a 50-foot drainage easement shall be established along Stafford Creek.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Commissioner Lammers?
We get to see this again as a final plat, correct? Yes. I would just like to echo Chairman Ingram's desire for a conversation.
I would just like to echo Chairman Ingram's desire for a conversation prior to that final plat, because these are extensive conditions, and to be assured that somebody would keep an eye on them, especially since these conditions are critical to the rezoning, that would be helpful.
And I assume that, Matt, or Laura, that some of these will be taken care of on the final plat.
Yep, these conditions in particular.
That's the reason they show up on the preliminaries, to make sure that they appear on the finals, who hopefully will have considerably less conditions on the final.
Yep, and, but to Commissioner Lammers' point, there are some conditions to the rezoning, some of which will be demonstrated in the plat and will be taken care of that way, but then we can also discuss some of the ones that happen as development occurs. So we could set that as part of an agenda item in the next meeting to discuss it slightly.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Commissioner Snyder?
A question on condition nine. What's the reasoning behind that?
So our zoning code does not have an allowance for townhouses to cross lot lines in our current zoning ordinance. So in order to get around that and still allow for owner-occupied townhouses, what you do is you create, you can put even more than one townhouse on a lot, that would be okay as well, but then you file a document with it that then subdivides it as a condominium regime, and so it's a legal document that allows an individual to buy wall-to-wall within a townhouse.
The reason I'm asking is I wonder if that, if an individual was going to buy and they, if they were more done as individual units, they would not be considered condos. They would be individual units and, you know, might be looked at differently from a buyer's perspective. Just a question.
From the buying perspective, the land would be owned by all the tenants, like a portion of it would be owned. That's all documented in the condominium regime and would be part of their deed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Any additional questions? Seeing none, nobody still in the audience? Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Yes.
Lammers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hepner?
Yes.
Bransgard?
Yes.
Reinarts?
Yes.
Manus, yes. Garrington?
Yes.
Passes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Hepner?
Mr. Chairman, final case P 21-2, request of S.J. Russell, L.C., on behalf of Sophie Foster Revocable Trust for a preliminary plat of Birchwood South, first edition, for an 11-lot subdivision on 17.92 acres located at 4607 East 53rd Street. Staff recommends the planning and zoning commission accept the listed findings and forward case P 21-02 to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the nine listed conditions, and I so move.
Second.
Case number P 21-02 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Staff?
So this plat is essentially a continuation on the same property. However, this is the northern, roughly 18 acres, or the commercial portion. So again, it's on C2 and then comprehensive land use plan. It is regional commercial. So the preliminary plat creates nine developable lots, and then there are two outlots located at the southeast and southwest corners. Those will be used for stormwater management and detention. The plat will create, will extend the existing Lakeview Parkway that's north of 53rd Street south into the development. This intersection will be controlled by a traffic signal, and then there will be a second form of ingress and egress to the site further east on the property. The 10-foot multi-use trail that currently exists in Bettendorf, south of 53rd Street, will be extended throughout the site, all the way through to the west lot line of this development. All roads will be public infrastructure, and will create roughly 1,241 linear feet of public street. So staff is recommending approval of case P 21-02 to the city council with approval due to the listed conditions and findings. So the findings are that the plat conforms with the comprehensive plan, and that the plat with conditions would achieve consistency with the subdivision requirements. So the proposed conditions, there are 10 of them. The first one being to dedicate the multi-use trail along East 53rd Street as public right-of-way. Second, a note shall be added stating all streets and areas labeled as right-of-way will be dedicated to the city upon recording of the final plat. Three, all rezoning conditions shall be listed as a note on the plat. Four, Birchwood Lane and Birchleaf Road shall be renamed similar to the previous plat. Five, all sidewalks shall be shown on the preliminary plat, and a note shall be added stating that sidewalks shall be installed as development occurs or is ordered by the city. Six, the 30-foot access and utility easement east of Birchwood Lane to be renamed shall also include sewer and shall be extended across Lots 6 and or 9 to Lot B. Seven, access easements for the detention areas shall be congruent with the right-of-way and include access in the 15-foot utility easement to Lot A. Condition eight, Lot A and B shall include a stormwater detention easement. Condition nine, a note shall be added identifying ownership and maintenance responsibilities for the detention areas. And condition 10, a note shall be added that all drainage easements shall be maintained as stormwater passageways as a lawn and be free of structures, pools, fences, fill, bushes, trees, shrubs, or other landscaping that impede the flow of water.
Thank you, Matt. Questions of commissioners? I see none. I'm going to throw something out, again, to staff. Laura, in light of what we got, what we have going on with a developer out by Locust Street deciding to erect monumental signs, advertising their development, this is obviously a major development. I would hope that Dolan and Russell would have more etiquette than to just throw up signs off their property unlike what we've got over on Locust. Is that something that we need to, as staff, to remind developers that they're not free at will to erect these monuments without paying for advertising billboards or whatever the case may be? I mean, is that something that we need to look at in the future to avoid this scenario?
I don't think it's necessarily within Plan and Zone Commission's purview. There, I know it's hard to believe, but it is enforced. It's something that's a constant battle for our code enforcement officers related to off-site signage. We are working with the Home Builders Association as they feel like there is a gap in our zoning code related to subdivision advertisement for things that are off of major corridors. We're looking to see what they propose, and we will take a look at it. But both of these pieces would be allowed to construct up to a 64-square-foot sign on their property once the construction begins.
And I understand that. I'm totally in tune with that. It's when they start distributing them throughout the city at will that I don't understand. And I'm not saying that that's something that we need to control. I'm just looking at, from staff's perspective, that we need to...
Understand, the city operates on a complaint basis, so you can submit your complaints to the city or use the CCLix Fix app.
And I do regularly, thank you.
And then they send out the code enforcement officers. It's easier when they are in the public right-of-way, we can pull them. When it's on private property, it takes some time to go through the process to get those removed.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering if education wouldn't help eliminate some of this.
I think they know.
That's what I'm asking. Thanks. All right, any additional questions now that I'm done? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Thank you. Schneider?
Yes.
Lammers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hepner?
Yes.
Bransgard?
Yes.
Reinarts?
Yes.
Manus, yes. Garrington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
That's all this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepner. Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Moving on, any additional business?
I do not have anything else at this time.
Communications, anything? Commission? Seeing none? I've obviously overextended my welcome with my comments, so I'll quit now.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor of adjournment signify by aye.
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 opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we are adjourned, and once again, I want to thank everybody for participating and being here, and it's great to be mask-free and see everybody's faces. I hope the rest of the commission can be at our next meeting, and I look forward to seeing everybody. Thanks again for your time. We are adjourned.